And at this time, I recognize the chairman of the Finance Committee to make the initial motion for Article S-1.
And I would like to defer that reading of that recommendation to Deborah Sauvene.
Thank you for this honor. And Mr. Moderator, I'll have a few words to say after the presentation and the speaker to introduce.
All right.
That the town of Stoughton appropriate the amount of $123,760,000 for the purpose of designing, constructing, originally equipping and furnishing a new high school and district office and undertaking any and all related site development on town-owned property located at 232 Pearl Street in Stoughton to replace the existing high school and district office and all incidental and related expenses, including but not limited to the demolition of the existing building and office, quote, "project pursuant to a construction contract procured in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 149, or a contract utilizing construction management at risk delivery method in accordance with the provisions of MGL, Chapter 149A, as determined by the High School Building Committee, which school facility shall have an anticipated useful life as an educational facility for the instruction of schoolchildren of at least 50 years and for which the town may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, quote, MSBA, said amount to be expended under the direction of the school of the Stoughton High School Building Committee. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amount under MGL, Chapter 44, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. That the town of Stoughton acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a nonentitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any project costs the town of Stoughton incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town of Stoughton, provided further that any grant that the town of Stoughton may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of 1/56 and 26 hundredths percent, 56.26 percent, of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA, or 2, the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, provided that any appropriation hereunder shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town to exempt the amounts required for the payment of interest in principle on said borrowing from the limitations of taxes imposed by MGL 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2 and 1/2, and that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the town of Stoughton and the MSBA.
Obviously, I'm not going to ask for a vote at this time. I also made it should be an indication that you have received a report from the Finance Committee and the Intergovernmental Relations Committee should be on the record. All right, at this time, we have some people who'd like to make presentations. I had the list here someplace. Mr. Recupero.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
You have the list.
I left it with you. Again, thank you, Mr. Moderator, and through you, thank you to the town meeting members. I don't want to lean in too far. So, project. Once again, thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you to the town meeting members. I have the unique honor and privilege to introduce this project to you that has been quite a long way in coming. And in this case, this last time that this issue came before this body was in 2012, I believe, when this town meeting appropriated $1 million for feasibility study through the MSBA grant process, which brings us here this evening. Having gone through that, I set the stage for those with professional credentials more qualified than I to talk about this project, but I'm pleased to present to you what we've come forward with as the new Stoughton High School. As I said, this was part of the MSBA grant process, and this is very much a partnership between the town and MSBA. As you heard in the motion, the MSBA will be funding a substantial amount under their grant process, and you'll hear quite a bit of that in the presentation that follows. The building committee for this was appointed in July 2014. At this point, since we've been under the last two years, in the last two years, under quite an aggressive schedule putting this project forward for you, I'd like to take a moment and introduce the committee to you. And if the committee members, when I introduce you, could rise? You can hold applause, but we'll keep moving. Vice Chair of the committee is Joel Wolk. Joel has many years in construction with Gil Bain Construction Company. Dr. Margery Rizzi, Superintendent of Schools. Michael Hartman, Town Manager. Chairwoman of the School Committee, Katie Pene Anokian. Former chairperson of the Finance Committee and the liaison to the Finance Committee, Rick Hill. Stoughton High School Principal Julie Miller. The Chief Procurement Officer for the town of Stoughton, Maureen Doherty. The Director of Operations and Maintenance for the Stoughton Schools, Joel Harding. Michael Conley, a citizen appointee to the committee, he's the principal of Mansfield High School. And Roberta Harback, she's a local businesswoman, she also sat on the Building Committee for the Southeastern Regional Vocational School. And I don't think Roberta's here this evening, but the first job of the committee was when we organized was to hire an owner's project manager. And we did that in, I believe, January of 2015, and we winnowed down a field of 14 companies vying for the job and chose Compass Project Management. Compass Project Management is, in this case, owned and operated by Tim Bonfati, and our project manager for this project is Dominic Tiberi. We worked with them since they've been on board, and I think much of the success that this committee has benefited from over the last, well, almost two years, has been due to the very first choice that we made with the OPM that we chose. Compass has more than 10 years in the business of being a project manager for schools. They have 100% success in school projects and bringing them both in time and under budget. Compass Project Management has done Weston High School, they were just successfully, the OPM approved for Middleborough High School. Many of you visited Norwood High School, that's their project, and also Marshfield High School, those are just a few of the projects they've participated in. Next, after we appointed an OPM, we, through the designer selection panel of MSBA, selected an architect, and DRA, Drummy Rosanna Anderson, is the architect that we've selected and been working with over the last more than year, well, year and a half at this point with DRA. DRA is working in Stoughton with Carl Franceschi and Scott Wooden, two principals of DRA. DRA's worked on several projects you may be familiar with, Waymouth High School, they also did the Southeastern Regional Edition, they also have, I have a list, they did six schools in Milton, you may be familiar with that project, and they specialize in schools. I think we have the right team, and I think this project, to the extent that we've had any success, has been the result, again, of the choices we made with the team. And just to orient you on time, this project started well beyond when this committee was, well before this committee was appointed. In 2010, the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Rizzi, had the foresight to organize an ad hoc feasibility study committee that was born out of the facilities maintenance study that we did. Actually, DRA was the firm that was hired to do our facilities maintenance, facilities master plan. And this group of people, who, I wish I had their names and I could recognize them, and somebody who speaks behind me, I hope they do, because everything that we've done to this point is due to their hard work, and one of them I know you will hear from in a few minutes. After that, we actually entered into the MSBA process after town meeting appropriated money for feasibility study. There was an intervening event that was organized by the Hectoring of Deborah Sauvene, who got our legislative delegation and the highest executives from MSBA to come to Stoughton for an afternoon. It was a Tuesday morning, if I remember right, and I was invited there, as were several other people, Mr. Delinsky was there, Deborah Sauvene. And we pleaded, actually Deborah pled the case of Stoughton High School to MSBA, took them for a tour. We discussed what we would need to do to qualify in the SOI that we were going to submit. And so we did, after which we were accepted, and the final acceptance into the program happened in 2014 in July. And the process from that point had been fully inclusive and engaging in the community. That was actually important, you'll hear about that again, not going to harp on it too much, but I think it was critical, because we've had, since that committee engaged in the process, we've had several community forums. One was in June, right after we hired the architect. We gathered together people to get in a room in this building and ask what this community wanted that architect to design. We had broke off into groups and had skull sessions in each of those groups. Following that, after the project started to take shape and we had what looked to be a plan taking shape, we met again and had another community forum. And then when we had a schematic, we met again and had another community forum. And eventually, in December, we submitted our preferred schematic to MSBA that was approved in January 2016, and since that approval, we've been going through the process of adding element, designing, building elements to that. So now you have a building that was at first conceptual, and now it actually looks like a real live building. And that brings us to May 2, 2016, in this town meeting. Not the last step. There is a special election on June 7, and that is to approve a debt exclusion so that this project can be funded. And our role isn't to talk about that at this point, but it is a critical step in the process, and it is one that you should be aware of. This is actually a precondition to that. If we don't get by town meeting, there's no reason for that election, I wouldn't think. And I'm going to touch briefly on this, but this is for other people more qualified than I. This is very much a design that was driven by process. And what I mean by that is we started out with a broad concept, an educational plan that was put together by Julie Miller, the principal of Stoughton High School, Dr. Rizzi, people who Julie worked with in the high school, put together a 50-plus-or-minus-page document that outlined how we're going to bring education to the students of Stoughton for the next, for the 21st century. And I have to tell you a quick anecdote, and then I'm going to move on. I was at the MMA, the Mass Municipal Association, some of people, some of you have heard this story, I was at the MMA conference, walking around, MSBA had a little booth off to the side, and there was a gentleman there. It wasn't a great crowd, actually, I was with Selectmen Cohen, so he can attest to that. And I went up to the gentleman, and I said, "Thank you." They were about to vote it at the time, this was in mid-January. I said, "Thank you for everything you've done and all the help that you've had with our project." And he said, "Jeez, you know, that educational plan that you submitted, best I've ever seen, best I've ever seen." And now I'm told that they actually hold other school districts to that same standard that Stoughton submitted. Some districts will submit a, you know, four or five-page document, ours was 50 pages, and that grew, actually started in the mid-'40s. And it was a particular moment of pride for me to stand in front of the guy who was making the decision on Stoughton High School, who said, "We were the best." But that drove everything. Very well deserved. And again, you know, when I say that this was a design that was driven by process, that was at the heart of everything. So once that educational plan was put together, something I had nothing to do with, but I've read several times, and I'm impressed each time, from there, we went through a process of figuring out the options for where we were going to put it. We didn't plop down a school just anywhere. We measured everything, from the parcel to the design, to whether it was going to be an addition or renovation, or a new school, everything down to the point where we came up with a final building design that was all driven by the process, set in place by MSBA, and all at the heart of it with the educational plan that we submitted to MSBA, which they approved and which I'm very proud of. And at that, there's no better segue I can give than to introduce Julie Miller to tell you a little bit about that.
As Mr. Recupero mentioned, I'm going to speak to you briefly about the educational plan. I won't go into all 50 pages of it for you, I will spare you, but it is a comprehensive document that does detail everything that we do at Stoughton High School now and what we hope to do in the future. It is the end result of many, many conversations over the past several years with the stakeholders of Stoughton, the parents, the students, the teachers, administration, and community members. Additionally, in June of last year, we had a two-day visioning session that was led by an educational consultant who led the teachers and students and parents and community members and administrators through an intense visioning to determine what it is we really want to focus on here at Stoughton High School and what our vision really is, what we want the new Stoughton High School to look like, not structurally, but educationally. During this visioning session, several key ideas arose, and they are detailed in that educational program. And what we require is a building that allows us to bring the 21st century educational skills to our students. This means a building that is flexible, allows for creativity, communication, collaboration, technology, and allows us to advance with technology. Those are the skills that our students need now and they'll need in the future. Our current building is linear in design. Many of you are probably former graduates yourself, it hasn't changed much. Classrooms are placed along a long corridor, there are faculty dispersed all over the building, and this particular design does not provide the flexibility and collaboration that we really require. Rather, we would benefit from small clusters of classrooms that surround a teacher collaboration space or spaces and other spaces where students can collaborate, and the proposed design contains these elements. Further, the design allows us to be flexible in how we organize. Currently, we organize by department, but that doesn't necessarily mean that's what our future will look like. In the current design, we may want to organize by a freshman academy or STEM and STEAM academy as examples. The new high school proposal would allow us to be able to do just that. In the current high school, event spaces are spaces that are shared by multiple individuals in the whole school, are on opposite ends of the building, and they are scattered and not in central locations. For example, the media center, it should be centrally located, we want it to be the heart of the school. It is not located in a place that allows for that. Due to the location of the current gym, cafeteria, and auditorium, nighttime activities make it very difficult for us to secure this building, and safety and security is our number-one concern. And therefore, in the proposed building, you'll see a little bit later on when they go through the plans, those event spaces are on one side of the building, which would allow us to be able to secure the building during those large events. We want spaces to allow for creativity, where we have proposed, the proposed building has these spaces, an engineering classroom, robotics classroom, art rooms with adjacent kilns, photography studio, a video studio, a media center that can accommodate a variety of programming. We currently have the experts on staff for these programs, we just don't have the space to really grow them and allow them to flourish the way they deserve. We've reached the capacity for what we can do with this building. We've proposed large group instructional spaces, a space similar to what we call A307 currently in this building, as well as a black box theater. We have a current drama club that meets after school, and it expands, it is expanding rapidly. Our current students want and need a program that runs during the school day, and a black box theater would allow for that program to grow. But because that black box theater would be a flexible space, it would also be able to be used by DECA and Destination Imagination and faculty meetings and student council and for a whole variety of other purposes. One of the driving forces behind a new high school building is providing special education with the appropriate educational spaces. We hope to bring back programs that we currently send our students out for, which are costly to the district. For example, the new high school building proposes a space for 18- to 22-year-olds in order to help them transition to life after high school. And the new high school also proposes an appropriate space with a handicap-accessible kitchen and life skills area, which would better serve our students rather than sharing the space in the school store as they currently do. The new high school proposes science classrooms that meets today's standards. Our average science classroom in this current building is about 800 square feet. Current regulations are at 1,440 square feet, almost double that space. Our current labs are labs simply because they have a sink in them. They are not equipped the way they need to be, and we need to bring those up to where they should be right now so that our students can be competitive in the STEM fields. Our current gymnasium is substantially undersized. The size limits us in our ability to be able to offer classes during the school day because it conflicts in the master schedule. Additionally, the entire school body cannot fit in the gymnasium, we do not have a location to have a whole school assembly, and that affects things such as our traditional Thanksgiving pep rally. And further, we can't host tournament games because of the size of our gymnasium, so the new high school proposes a gymnasium that will meet the needs of our students, our sports and athletics, and our community. We are currently a Level 1 high school here at Stoughton High School. We've accomplished a great deal within the building and within the confines of this building, but this building has outlived its years. We have reached the capacity within this building, and what could we accomplish if our faculty and our students could focus daily on the purpose of being here rather than battling on the obstacles of leaking roofs and ceilings, of temperature control that is unmanageable, of spaces that we have retrofitted for our educational program that are clearly not up to par? So I am going to turn this over now to Mr. Bonifati, who's going to talk about the process.
Thank you, Julie. So, as TJ mentioned and as Julie just very eloquently elaborated on, this whole process starts with, if I can get this right, this whole process starts with the educational plan. So, once we had the educational plan and we looked at a number of options, and I'm going to review those with you very quickly to get to this sort of shortlisted options, we came up with a series of criteria, and when I say "we," I mean the building committee. So, when we look at all the options that we measured both initially and as we got to the shortlist, we measured those against evaluation criteria, many of which you see here. We grouped them into eight broad categories, but as you can see from this list, the general categories that we looked, when we looked at these options, broke down into both objective criteria, like cost and schedule, as well as subjective criteria, like how well the program met the educational plan that Julie went over, how was, what was the impact it would have, each of these options would have on students and neighbors, what was the context and fit, both within the broader community of Stoughton, but also here at the campus of the high school and middle school, as well as what would be the impact during construction in terms of how disruptive would the options be? As we went through those criteria, and as TJ mentioned in the slide previously, we got to, down to the shortlist of four options. And the four options you see here essentially grouped into, well, there were five options. One was, we looked at actually what would it cost just to fix this building, basically keeping it as a 20th-century high school, but to fix the issues that are wrong with it. That's the one that is on the near-left, on the left side. But the other options, the ones that got into further consideration, were two add-reno options, the two B options. One was more, B2 was a more add-reno, a more renovation and less addition, B3 was more addition and less renovation, and then two new construction options, C1 and C2A. As you can see, when we graded them and we looked at a scale, and the committee did this over a series of two meetings, we looked at it from sort of the least advantageous to most advantageous, how they all met the criteria. And I think it's pretty evident when you look at the grading that the C2A option became pretty obvious to the committee as the preferred option to move forward to the MSBA in January. I do want to point out, before we get into the definition, to the description of the C2A option, that when we looked at cost around all of those B and C options, the difference between the least expensive option, which was B2, and the new option, C2A, was 1%. When we looked at what the options were to create a high school here with additions and renovations to meet the ed plan, and we looked at a new high school, the difference was 1%. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Carl Franceschi, who's going to review the design with you specifically.
I'm going to take this microphone out so I can turn and look at the screen and point at some things while I talk. We're very happy to present this design that really is a consensus among both the consultants and the Building Committee and the MSBA, and it's very responsive, as you'll see, to the educational plan. So this is a site plan of the proposed school, to get you oriented. This is Pearl Street, this is Adam Street, Cushing Street over here, there's the middle school. The existing high school is located about here right now, so the new building, shown in white here, will sit sort of diagonally behind the existing high school on what is now, what are now the tennis courts, the track, the soccer field in that vicinity. A couple of the criteria I want to highlight that this site plan satisfies and improves upon the existing conditions. One is the circulation. Here's the main entrance drive, and there's a dedicated drop-off for cars, for parents dropping off students, and then at the rear, there's another dedicated drive specifically for buses. So that's one of the first things, is separating cars and buses and pedestrians more safely than is done currently. Another is the adjacency of the parking to the building, it's very convenient. Here's the front door, here's the back door, there's now parking on three sides in addition to the existing Cushing Street lot, which will get reused. And then the other factors, too, are the site amenities. Obviously, once the building is complete, the goal was to recreate or improve upon all the athletic facilities that exist on the site and the parking facilities. So there will be a new synthetic turf, a multipurpose field here with bleachers on either side, five new tennis courts, a track, natural grass soccer field, again, a six-lane track, a full-size soccer field here. And the number of parking spaces is actually improved upon what exists today. There's about 375 spaces today on the property, there will be 415 parking spaces, and that includes removing spaces off of Adam Street, restoring this to have a sidewalk and a curb and be a safer condition there. And for events, we can even exceed that count by parking along one side of this entrance drive, along one side of the bus drive, and better utilizing the middle school parking, which is closer now to the new high school. So it improves upon the parking access as well. And then looking at the floor plans, these are oriented more or less the same way that site plan was, so here's the front door, here's the back door, so to speak, from the bus entry. There's a long linear lobby through here, and as was mentioned, there's a clear separation between the public aspects of the building and sort of the academic aspects of the building. So the gymnasium, the auditorium, art and music are on this bottom half of the plan, the academic spaces are on the top half of the plan, and then in the center, as was desired in the education plan, are the student commons, the cafeteria, and the library on the second floor.
Can you focus that a minute?
I wish I could, but I'm not in control of that. They're back there. It is a little bit fuzzy, but I can help you understand if you're missing some spaces here. But these essentially are classrooms, that's what that is, these are science labs, these are special ed spaces, these are teacher spaces here. This is the administration, so it's right adjacent to the main entrance for safety and security. These are locker rooms on the first floor, this is the kitchen, this is the student commons cafeteria area, okay, on the first floor. Then moving upstairs- Then moving upstairs, here's the gymnasium, the upper half of the auditorium, an upper lobby. Here's the library, as was mentioned and was desired. It's in the heart of the building now, central to these classroom wings. But the building can be closed off through a few convenient doors when there is a public function. And then the classrooms continue onto the third floor of the building. These are high two-story spaces. This is a three-story building on this side. So it's a very compact plan as opposed to the kind of sprawling linear nature of the existing school. And then to look at it three-dimensionally, we have some views to share with you. Here's Pearl Street again. So here's the new building. Here's the three-story classroom wing. Here's the two-story gymnasium, auditorium, arts and music wing. And then in the center is that linear lobby topped by a glass translucent skylight. And there is a small courtyard here bringing light into the center of the building as well. And then as we get down to eye level, this is the entrance off of Pearl Street. This is the sloping drive curving that brings you down to the school. Right here is the classroom wing adjacent to the track and soccer field. It's a three-story masonry building. It does pick up on a lot of civic, other civic buildings in Stoughton that are masonry, that have nice large windows, that have brick. These are different colors of brick here, but it is predominantly masonry building, sort of vertical proportions, kind of classic in nature. This is obviously a more contemporary, a little bit cleaner design, somewhat, we might say, forward-looking, much like the education plan is forward-looking. Here's the front of the building with the football field in the foreground. Here's the entrance here, the gymnasium on one side, the administration space, and then this is the start of the classroom wing to the right. Getting a little closer, you can see now, the good, I'm sorry, let me go back to that one, the good supervision here that the administration has adjacent to the front entry. This is the parent drop-off area and the main pedestrian entrance to the building. There's the entrance tower. And then moving indoors, this is that linear lobby. It's a two-story high space capped with a skylight. There's a main stair bringing you up to the upper lobby. This is the lower lobby here, which has, you can see, double-height space. Here's the cafeteria, open to that lobby. It's a different kind of concept of the commons can act as a lobby on a night like tonight. It would be the sort of pre-function space before an event in the auditorium or the gymnasium. Moving upstairs or looking at it from the other perspective, this is if you were to enter from the bus drop-off. And again, there's a stair at this end to bring you up as well. Here's the upper lobby with some overlooks down below, and here's the library in the heart of the building, right off of that upper commons. And then just two quick slides to explain the process here. This is the proposed new high school. Here's the existing high school, again, Pearl Street here. So you can see the entire new high school can be built while the existing school stays in operation. It obviously does disrupt some athletic fields, but it doesn't touch the parking off Adam Street or the parking off Pearl Street. And so for the most part, the ongoing teaching and learning can happen with minimal disruption over the two-year period that it will take to construct the new school. Then once that can be occupied, the existing building would be demolished and the athletic fields completed. And we estimate that the new school could be occupied in the fall of 2019, and then in the following school year it would take to complete the field. So by the summer of 2020, the entire project would be complete. So now to speak about the financing of the project, I'll turn it over to Rick Hill from the building committee.
Excuse me. So the cost of the project, the MSBA has a, let me just echo TJ's sentiments. The reason where we are today are manyfold, not the least of which are the consultants that we employed to get this project done. And both our owner's project manager and the architect firm that we've employed have done a terrific job, and I just want to express my gratitude for all of their help in guiding us to this point. The Mass School Building Authority has very stringent guidelines in terms of what they will cover in cost and what they won't. And they really do a good job of keeping you on track. And that at a high level is to keep, is to protect the taxpayers. So people aren't building frivolous buildings that aren't adding value or supporting an educational program. This first screen here speaks to the bottom line. It's bolded. The total all-inclusive price of this project is $123,540,688. It is inclusive of the original million dollars in feasibility study money that this body had voted and appropriated. It includes money for the administration, design, and project management, $13,462,762. Constructions, including central office, of course, to the heart of the core of the cost here at $100,961,191. Miscellaneous costs for utilities, testing, moving, things that generally fall outside the scope of construction and standard costing, $350,000. Furniture, equipment, and technology at a cost of $2,756,000. And then contingencies. The MSBA is adamant that enough of a contingency is built in in several different parts of the project to make sure that the cost of the project is protected. And for this, we've had to build in $5 million in contingencies to ensure the project. So the all-in cost again is $123,546,88. May 25th, so it's a good point. Right now, the budget's been approved by the MSBA staff, and they have recommended for approval to the MSBA board at their meeting on May 25th, upcoming. This next slide talks about the cost breakdown and who pays for what. So again, you see the total project cost of $123,546,88, less ineligible items of So the asterisk down the bottom, the footnoted area, says items deemed ineligible for reimbursement by the MSBA include: construction costs exceeding $299 a square foot. Our project exceeds the $299 a square foot, but the MSBA has said that our project comports with all the recent projects that have been built, both in cost and the design and the extraneous costs that go along with it. So the $299 that the MSBA has just drawn a line in the sand and says, here's the cost per square foot we'll reimburse for. There's not a lot of structured reasoning as to why that's the number that's there, but it's at one point they just stopped and said, here's all we'll reimburse for. The site costs exceeding 8%, so, you know, landscape and athletic facilities and things of that nature are also ineligible, for the most part, for reimbursement. Fee costs exceeding $2,400 per student, legal fees, moving costs, and costs associated with the central office. So the maximum basis of the grant, what the MSBA will award us is based on the $86,139,971. Of that, they are awarding us 60.67% of that cost, or $52,252,507. The base reimbursement for the MSBA program is 54.2% as you heard earlier. We're getting 60.67% because we've incorporated a number of things within this school that the MSBA holds out as incentives. So, energy efficiency, for example, greening of the school and the construction materials that are used. So again, the MSBA is reimbursing at $52,252,507. That number won't go down. The estimated town share remaining for this body to consider is the $71,288,181 total for the project. Just a note, we'll take questions at the end if that's okay. So what's the impact to our taxpayers? So there are three examples here, but again, this project was designed so that it was as conservative as it could possibly be. So we based the tax impact on a 20-year bond and based it the current valuation of $1.26 per thousand dollars. The home value at $200,000 would have a max yearly tax rate of $252 or $63 a quarter. A home valued at $300,000 would have a max yearly tax of $378, an additional tax in addition to what, if this override would pass. And that breaks out at $95. The $300,000 is kind of where we are as a town. So the Stoughton average, and you can see the line below the table, home assessment in 2016 is $307,075. So a max impact would be at $387, add to the tax bill, or $97 per quarter. The, again, trying to be as conservative as possible, the funding, the cost of money here is at 3.5%. We're currently borrowing at 2.7%, I think. So again, trying to make sure that we are exceeding all the parameters for the costing so that we've covered it and that hopefully, at the end of the day, and not hopefully, it will be less expensive than this. This is year-one cost. And it assumes no growth. So if another IKEA moves in, or if, you know, housing developments are built, or you add a porch, or a garage, or, none of that is built into the anticipated revenue here that we would be using as a base to pay. So as you broaden the tax base, there's, it reduces the impact on the tax owners, or the taxpayers and the owners and the property owners in town. So, and I think with that, I've covered pretty much most of the selling points, and I'd like to turn it back to Mr. Recupero.
You know, if only I had a better school. So this is where we come from. This building that we sit in right now had its last substantive renovations of any kind in 1963. This building that we're sitting in right now that we refer to as Building E. Before that, the original building, Building A, was built in 1923, and then there were additions in 1952 and 1955. A generation ago is when the last substantive addition to this building was installed. More than 50 years. And outside of just regular maintenance, changing the seats in this room that you sit in right now, there's been nothing substantial done to this building since then. The science labs, you've all heard about the horror stories, and many of you took tours. The science labs where students have to do virtual experiments because they don't have actual science labs. The leaking walls, water that leaks through the bricks. I could go through them all, but we've heard it again. You heard it when this first came up for appropriation for the feasibility study. And I hope after tonight, after town meeting votes tonight, I hope we never have to discuss the horrors of this building ever again, because we'll be able to discuss what we can look forward to when our students walk through the doors in 2019, something very modern and very much improved. The reason why you should vote for this building that we submit to you tonight is because we have at every point been open, transparent, engaging, and asked this community in any number of ways, what do you want in a high school? And we've incorporated those into the design. We have had public forums with community groups all over town, probably close to two dozen. We've had community forums that we've advertised and sponsored. If you go online, on the website for this project, and on the Facebook page for this project, you can ask a question, and you'll get an answer back within 24 hours. Dominic Tiberi snaps those out almost immediately. You have any number of people who have watched the progress of this, has seen meetings that get televised. Every meeting has been on Smack. We've had probably close to, I want to say, half a dozen presentations on Smack at various stages in the, in the timeline of the project to keep the public informed. And we did so so that along the way, you knew that this was the right school for the town of Stoughton, and this is why, because it's laid out right in front of you. All of the documents attended to this project are online. You can go through it, take a Saturday, read through it if you want, or I hope you'll take my word for it and those of our professionals, that we did our job right, and we did it with you along the way. And this school will serve the generations to come in this town better than any other school that we could have built because of the process that we were engaged in. We have a unique opportunity now. We get over $52 million from MSBA that MSBA staff told us last week they will recommend approval to the Board of Directors at MSBA. And we get one shot at this. We get only one shot. And I don't want to go back another slide because I'm not very adept with the clicker. But you recall the last time we did anything to this building in 1963? If we miss this shot, when's the next time that we have to do something to this building because we don't have a choice? Because we have a loss of accreditation? Because there is some sort of dire need in the physical structure of this building that we don't have a choice? We can do this right now because we have MSBA money available to us and because we have the benefit of borrowing rates that are at historic lows. And we've managed our debt well. Actually, just two or three years ago, our bond rating was improved, and we can borrow better now than we could ever before. But you heard in the beginning and you heard throughout the presentation that this was really about education of our children, that the whole process was driven by the educational plan that was drafted by the school, the school district, Principal Miller, Superintendent Rizzi, the staff. It's all about education. This is about preparing the students of Stoughton for the next generation so that they compete on the, they can compete on the world stage better than they can now. So if we vote for this, and if we do this project, the people occupying these seats in town meeting, well, I mean, maybe the same town meeting, will be better prepared because of what we do tonight, because of the building that we're building tonight. And I hope you vote for it. And I, because I have a tendency to be, you know, just a tad dopey at times, I have, we take inspiration in any number of ways, and I have in my pocket something where I grabbed an inspiration about six months ago, and a fortune cookie of all things. It said, "A school is a building which has four walls and tomorrow inside." And I thought that was particularly appropriate because tomorrow, the students in the new high school will be better prepared. Tomorrow, if we can do this project, we can do anything in this town. If we don't get to do this project, I'm not sure we can do much, because a high school is the very heart of this community. People go away to foreign lands, to other states, to distant corners of the world, and they don't see, they don't look up online and see how IKEA is doing. They don't care whether we built a new Cumberland Farms. They don't care whether there's an apartment building downtown. Those are all nice things, but they want to know is how the high school is doing. And it's a point of pride for us today. It will be a point of pride for the students tomorrow. And I hope you vote for it. We welcome your questions, and thank you very much.
We have a few, we have a few people here that have asked to speak. Adam Dawkins, town meeting member. Deb?
Deborah Sovini, Precinct Four. I would like to just take a little bit of time to thank some of the people who have helped bring us this far. This has been kind of like a relay race with many people who have carried the baton forward for the new high school. And it began with the Facilities Master Plan Committee that was chaired by Dick Fitzgerald and a number of other people that were on the committee. And then that feasibility, that master plan was approved by the 2010 town meeting. The baton was then passed to the school committee, and the school committee formed the feasibility study committee. study committee that used the master plan to take action towards a new high school. Now, the people that were on the feasibility study committee, I'd like to acknowledge them, and that was Len Anastasi, Joseph Beeta, Gretchen Baron, Robert Bornstein, Barry Crimmins, John DeDio, Bruce Delinsky, Rabbi Jonathan Hausman, Adam Thornton, Doug Zorn, and ex-officio non-voting members, Dr. Maggie Rizzi, Matt Colantonio, Joel Harding, and Maureen Mulvey. Four years, members of the feasibility committee came here and asked you guys for a million dollars for a project that hadn't been approved, but was a hope and a dream and a message that we wanted to send to our state legislators. And that was, I can't tell you how key that was, because they looked at Stoughton and saw that that vote of 135 to 6 for a million dollars for the study, that was almost unanimous. And that sent a powerful message that Stoughton was looking to the future, that Stoughton really valued education, and that Stoughton was willing to take this big step forward. And that, and that vote is what enabled Dr. Rizzi, Joyce Hissany, and I to lobby the State House. Our legislators knew about that vote really fast and were really impressed. In fact, they were astonished. And without the help of Representative Bill Galvin, Representative Lou Kafka, and Senator Brian Joyce, the approval by the state would not have happened. With their help, that's how we got here. There was a meeting here at the school, our legislators came, the MSBA came, there are members of the Board of Selectmen, town government, the school committee. And when they took a tour of this school and saw what it was like, that's when they realized that they really had to do something. And it was the tour of the school by town meeting in 2012, when you guys went behind the scenes and saw what it was like. Because a lot of people had said, well, you know what, I graduated 20 or 30 years ago. It really was not that bad. Now, the idea for the tours was Stephanie Carraro's. And it was when you guys went behind the scenes and saw it that that was definitely a turning point for the, for that vote of a million dollars. You all saw a list that we produced in 2013 about how the deficits at the school were affecting the education of our children. And you'll hear a little bit more about that from one of the students who'll be speaking after me. Now, the baton has been passed to the school building committee and to all of you here tonight. And to anybody at home watching this, note that June 7th will be the really important vote to come out and vote for this project. Just a reminder that the high school is on accreditation warning status. So we have to, the administration has to report on a regular basis what kind of progress that we're making towards repairs on the school. Approval of this new school will send a strong message, not only to the MSBA and to the state, but to all the kinds of businesses that want to come into Stoughton to locate, to relocate. And I'm asking you to please vote yes. I'd like to introduce a top member of the current class of 2016, Ariana Risk. Ariana and her project partner, Alyssa McGillicuddy, won the high school science fair this year. They went to regionals, they came in second, and this weekend, they are representing Stoughton in the state, state science fair at MIT. And Ariana is going to take you through what it's like as a student, living and studying in this building, and what a typical day is like. So Ariana.
Thank you for the introduction. So as Deborah said, my name is Ariana Risk. I'm a current senior at Stoughton High School. Before I begin telling you everything wrong with SHS, let me begin by saying I love the Stoughton High School community. I feel honored to be a part of a diverse and socially conscious student body. All of my friends, all of my friends and classmates are unique, free-thinking individuals who admire the opinions of others while adding their own valuable firsthand experiences. However, there are certain downsides of going to Stoughton High School, and all of these negatives stem from the outdated building and facilities. Let me tell you about a typical day at Stoughton High School. I begin my day by arriving to school 35 minutes early so that I get a spot in the senior lot. In first period, my friend Rachel is out of breath after running across the football field. She had to park in the junior lot because Adam Street is too small to accommodate the number of students who drive to school. First period, I have a study. Most studies require silence or minimal talking, so my friends and I go to the media center. However, the media center has 15-year-old Dell computers that take about half of my study to turn on. And if I want to relax in the media center and do my homework, there is no comfortable place to sit down and study. Second period crawls by because of how freezing school is today. The heating system, which continues to malfunction on a daily basis, is blowing out freezing cold air. In my Spanish classroom, which has six windows, which creates a chilly draft, my classmates and I are collecting sweatshirts to use as blankets to keep warm. I remember last year, we had a cold spell, and it was negative 10 degrees outside. One of my classrooms was 40 degrees that day. Imagine trying to focus in a 40-degree classroom for 90 minutes. Impossible. In the winter and fall, majority of the school year, the building is always at varying temperatures, making it difficult for students to focus during class. Third period, in calculus class, the smartboard bulb blew out. The smartboards are fantastic, however, when they stop working, or the bulb dies, which happens quite often, learning comes to a halt. Now my teacher's lesson plans are ruined, and we stop learning. The school wifi also malfunctions quite often, leaving teachers without online resources they often use in class. After lunch, I go to my final period of the day, physics. The science classrooms are too small for us to do full-scale experiments that we should be doing in classes like AP Chem and Physics. We simply do not have room to build and test what we want. Hence, when we read about a lab testing the relationship between frequency and wavelength, instead of performing the experiment ourselves, we do not get the full knowledge and educational experience that we need to do well in these exams. The lab equipment is outdated and undersupplied, leaving teachers to do entry-level labs when we instead should be experimenting with new sciences and cutting-edge technologies. According to Erin O'Connor, staff director for Representative Bill Gavin, and an alumni of SHS, all of the science rooms were built in the 1960s and cannot support the types of innovative safety, analytical, and instructional equipment found in the 21st century in newer schools. After school, I sprint outside to the senior lot because parents tend to block me in by parking right behind my car. I move my car to the gym side, rushing to find a spot and change for volleyball. Today, we are playing away, so there is a big crowd. However, because our gym is so small, it cannot accommodate the crowds at most games. During my game, I could also hear people's conversations from the court because the bleachers are so close to our courts. The small gym also creates scheduling conflicts for spring sports because multiple teams cannot practice inside together. For example, when it rains, tennis must go inside the middle school gym to practice. However, volleyball club practices in the middle school on Wednesdays, and then we have nowhere to go and end up canceling practice. Sports like swimming, lacrosse, and cheerleading cannot even practice at the high school and must drive themselves to practice somewhere else every day, which takes a big toll on the parents of underclassmen. I hope that this inside look into a typical day of an SHS student gives voters a look into why we so badly need a new high school. The environment we learn in directly affects our attitudes about school and our school pride. I hope coming Election Day on June 7th, that the constituents of Stoughton see the need for our new school and vote yes. Thank you.
Please give your name.
Mr. Moderator, Adam Dawkins from Precinct Five, and I rise in favor of building a new Stoughton High School. On the facade of the Boston Public Library at Copley Square, we find the words, "The Commonwealth requires the education of the people as the safeguard of order and liberty." Especially during election years, we hear over and over on the news about the evils of government. But tonight, ladies and gentlemen, we have an opportunity to display good, dependable government. That the role of government is to provide for the common good, not only for today, but also for those that come after us. That's not just good leadership, ladies and gentlemen, that is good government. I arrived here in Stoughton only about four years ago, and I decided to make Stoughton my home because I noticed a growing air of optimism in this town. That optimism is what led me to establish the Facebook group, Stoughton Enthusiasts, a forum where almost 900 people now share their hope and enthusiasm for the future of our town. If you pay attention to the posts on Stoughton Enthusiasts, it's very clear that the people of Stoughton want better. Our neighbors want to revitalize Town Center. They want economic growth. They want better opportunities for themselves and for their children. Economic growth, property values, community pride, all of these are exciting prospects. And all of these are inherently tied to the shape of our schools. To be sure, replacing our antiquated high school has required some very serious debate and some very serious disagreement. And it will continue to require a commitment to evidence, not just ideology. Over the past few years, the facts, the charts, and the empirical evidence have all been carefully laid out by those whose competency it is. So I thank the members of the Stoughton High School Building Committee for their hard work and dedication to pushing this project forward, for their efforts to educate the whole town and include all citizens in the conversation that has led us to this moment of decision. I thank the current and former members of the school committee who have championed this cause now for the past several years. But the end of the matter is this, friends and neighbors. Our high school is in need of radical change, and incremental improvements are not good enough. The time for renovations has passed. And of course, replacement will take sacrifice, and yes, expenses, personally and for the town, on our end. But we have to do whatever it takes to accomplish the reality that our students and this community deserve. There is far too much at stake to let this moment pass without action. It's not appropriate, and it's not helpful, to critique our school system without a first, without first addressing the facilities that we provide, where our students learn and where our teachers teach. But the excellence in education that happens in this very building deserves equal excellence in facilities. Stoughton is fortunate to have some of the finest and most dedicated teachers around, and tonight, we have the opportunity to prove to them, and to our students like Ariana, and to this whole community, that we will support their mission for superior education with state-of-the-art facilities. Our students and our teachers should not look at, should not look with envy at the schools in our neighboring towns. We have an opportunity tonight and on June 7th to make Stoughton the gold standard. And so, our vote tonight in favor of building a new Stoughton High School should not be a majority. It ought to be unanimous. And with one accord, as we say, yes, we demand better for our town, yes, the future of this town is important, and yes, we are committed to providing our teachers the tools and facilities that they need in order to excel as educators, as they inspire our students to be good and engaged citizens, ready for leadership in this town and in the world in the 21st century. Yes, our students and teachers and our neighbors and this town can depend on this town's government to act and lead with a hopeful vision to ensure a brighter future for all of us. Each one of us is here tonight because we're all Stoughton enthusiasts. And we all want what is best for our town's future. Let there be no debate about that. But let us not set a course for restoring Stoughton to what it once was. But instead, let's stand together and lead Stoughton forward toward a future brighter than any past. Every day, our students learn and our teachers teach in a building that somebody else built. The ones that came before us built this current high school, and they left us a strong legacy with a building that served us well for many, many years. And we're all very grateful for the sacrifices of those that came before us, to leave us a firm foundation. But now is the time to celebrate this building for all that we have gained from it, and it's time to look forward with joyful hope to the future of our community and of Stoughton High School for generations to come. This is our legacy. Tonight, we will decide the legacy that we want to pass on to those who come after us. The 19th century artist and philanthropist, John Ruskin, lived through an era during which many of our most beloved iconic buildings, even here in Stoughton, were erected. And I think his words resonate as we prepare for this new day in the life of our town. Ruskin said, "Therefore, when we build, let us think that we build forever. Let it not be for present delight, nor for present use alone. Let it be such work as our descendants will thank us for. And let us think as we lay stone on stone that a time is to come when these stones will be held sacred, because our hands, our hands have touched them. And people will say as they look on the labor and the wrought substance of them, 'See, this, this our mothers and our fathers did for us.'" Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Fitzgerald. Let's try to keep these things within five.
What was that?
Let's try to keep within the five minute.
I feel slighted. You're asking me to keep this within five minutes? You gotta be kidding me, Howard. On the way in this evening, as I was coming into the building, my dear friend, Tom Recupero, was sitting in the school committee room, and he said, "Oh, Fitzie, by the way, can I see you?" And I said, "Sure." I walked in, he says, "I put you down as speaker number six tonight." I wanted to thank him for that. It was a lot like that little, I got a flashback of the little joke, you know? The two guys are sitting down, and I say, "I wonder if baseball's played in heaven?" And the guy says, "Baseball's played in heaven, you're pitching Thursday." Thanks, so here I am. So I want to just give you some background as to how we, we need a new high school. There we go. Hold on a second, the thumb works. So I want to give you a little background as to how we arrived here, and I apologize to town meeting members who have heard this probably for the last six, seven, eight years. But for the new people that are here, let me give you some background. And for the audience at home, let me tell you how we arrived here. In 2006, 2007, we were engaged in a project to work on the school buildings for some ADA projects, and two buildings came back that we had some difficulty with, one being the Stoughton High School and the other being South Elementary School. And it was determined at that time that we had to bring these schools up to some certain standards, and to do that, very, very expensive, great numbers. So at that point in time, there was this program out there called the SBA, School Building Authority. And we said, "Okay, well, if we can't do that, and we can't fix the buildings, then we'll just go out and we're going to build a new high school. Sounds like a plan? See you Thursday." Well, they came back and said, "If you want to do that, go out and prove to us that you're in need of it. We want you to do a facilities plan of your buildings." So we formed a committee. So, we formed a committee, and the committee was then known, and forever known, as the Facilities Master Plan Committee. Very wonderful group of people, Justin Albert, Dan Wheeler, Lou Gito, I didn't forget your look, Doug Zorn, Dr. Maggie Rizzi, Joel Harding, Joyce Lucini, I know I'm gonna miss somebody. I feel like the Academy Award, you get up here and you're gonna say something, I know we're gonna miss someone. But it was a very good committee, and that committee now is forward, and we're doing the Facilities Master Plan. We're now known as the School Committee Facilities Master Plan Committee. You'll hear me later on in the annual town meeting, I'll be standing before you. But getting back to that, we put together a plan, and we had to come up with a facilities plan. So I stood before you, and we had this program, and we had to fund it. We had to find out what we needed. We had to get, we had to come up with what needed to be done. So we came before you with an article for $200,000 to do a Facilities Master Plan, and you approved it. We went forward, and on December 14th, 2009, the Facilities Master Plan Committee signed a contract with DRA, which is Drummy, Rosanna, and Anderson, that you're seeing up here on the screen, and Carl is sitting over there, and he was the architect and designer who walked us through it. At that time, when we got approval here for the monies, it was asked that, "Why can't we incorporate the town's buildings?" So we did. We incorporated the town's buildings, and we came up with this amount of money, enormous amount of money, to fix and repair the buildings. Forty million dollars on the school side, eight million dollars on the town side, forty-eight million dollars to repair the buildings. The facilities plan came in, there was $200,000 appropriated to do it, we brought it in at $138,000, and the committee did the work, the plan was brought forward to you, and it was approved in May of 2010. And at that time that it was approved, the committee turned the report over under Article II of the town meeting at that time, and that plan is the plan that we work on now. From that is where Mr. Sauvignon's committee came into play in August of, I believe it was August of 2010, and did an absolutely fantastic job. And ladies and gentlemen, this has been a long, long time getting to this point with a lot of wonderful people in this community working so hard to do it. That, what you see right there, is absolutely marvelous. It's what we need.
We're getting close to five.
Guys pushing me around, huh? I'm getting the, I'm getting the, hey, come on, come on, speed it up over there. But I mean, it's absolutely what we need. It's a wonderful project. It's what the town needs. So many wonderful people, DRA, Compass Management, all of the people that have put this together. So many people have talked before me, they're talking about how much we need it. I know how much we need it. I hope you know how much we need it. And we need it for the children, we need it for the townspeople. How much time I got left, Howard? But I do want to tell you that they talked about the D and the E building. We came in here in a class of 1966, and I graduated from that stage in 1970. Thank you. Please vote for it.
Molly Cochran.
My name is Molly Cochran, I'm a member of the school committee, but I'm actually speaking to you tonight as a parent of two juniors who are in the high school now. My children will never benefit from a new high school, and I'm hoping that they're going to be among the last to graduate from this building. As a parent, I have walked the halls, I have been in the classrooms, been with the teachers, and I can attest to you to the absolutely urgent need for a new high school, and it's long, long overdue. And my children ask me to mention the temperature problem is actually a serious problem for them to endure. In my opinion, the building gets a D grade for derelict, deteriorating, and quite frankly, it's just a depressing place to be. And the effect on our students is demoralizing. It's even more demoralizing when they go to other schools, as they do for their high school athletics and other activities, and this contrast is just really, really very stark. This high school facility is actually degrading our town's reputation throughout the area. But here we are after years of work and significant investment of money and resources, we have now come together as a town with a plan to get the facility, we need to ensure our children get an excellent education. So, do we want to seize this opportunity to have MSBA pour millions of dollars of value into our town? Or are we going to turn away, and are we going to decline into a third-rate community that does not value education? Tonight, I would love to have, echoing other speakers, town meeting members vote unanimously to support the new high school, just as the Board of Selectmen did and the entire school committee did, and to send a message to our community about how critically important this is to our future. An unanimous vote would also send a message to our kids. We'll invest in you because we expect only the best from you. And with reference to Representative Lynch's remarks earlier about the opioid crisis, I would think that the best way to prevent the tragedy of addiction is to keep students excited about learning and engaged in high school programs, and that's exactly what this facility we're planning can accomplish. So please vote yes for the high school.
Mr. Dennison.
I'm Mr. Dennison, not Mr. Morton. I appreciate this opportunity to speak. I am your recreation director, but I am a retired Stoughton High School English teacher. I attended Stoughton High School for four years in the early 70s as a student. I had hair. I left, went to college, and I returned and toiled for 35 years as an English teacher in the A building. That was the little corner that said it was built in 1923. Truthfully, I loved those years. But all nostalgia and sentimentality aside, in my last 10 years before retirement, it became increasingly clear that this facility was no longer fit to educate students in the 21st century. In 2010, with the help of a faculty committee, prior to the New England Association, Schools and Colleges, visit Stoughton High School for our accreditation, I chaired a committee, and we looked at school and community. And one of the things we had to look at was the building, and there were objective standards that we had to look at, follow, and with the help of Mr. Harding and Superintendent Rizzi, we looked at a lot of the maintenance plans and so forth and so on. The report was received by the NIESK Visitation Team in 2011, in March. They toured the facility, and they looked at any number of our programs. And after they left, report came back, and we were commended in a lot of ways. We do a lot of good things here, still do. It's a Level One high school. But our facility was lacking. We are on warning, we are still on warning to this day. And if we do not take care of this business now, we will likely lose our accreditation. I don't like to be a voice of negativity. I sense that this town meeting will receive this in a very positive way. I just want to finish quickly by saying that, now, there's a dedicated young social studies teacher who sits with us at town meeting, gives up an awful lot of time in the evening, and she reminded me, I've been retired for three years now, how much our children value their future. They don't get to vote tonight. A lot of Stoughton kids leave Stoughton High School to go to athletic events in other schools, drama events in other schools, robotics events in other schools, and they return with a bit of a sense of, you know, why can't we have that? We owe it to our kids and to our grandkids to provide them with a place that will foster a 21st-century education. We owe them a place in which their learning is a place that they can feel good about. Outside, on my way in, Dory Frankel, sorry, Dory, I just had to mention you by name, the SOLA president, SOLA is the support, our library association, they're selling these coloring books, and it was interesting because it's called The Icons of Stoughton. And about three pages in, there's a picture, a drawing, that you can color, I haven't colored it yet, of the E building entrance of Stoughton High School, with a brief reference to the A building, which was built in 1923. With your vote tonight and a successful vote on June 7th, I would suggest that this little picture in here becomes the collector's item, and that the E building disappears, and we have a new high school. Thank you.
Mr. Morton.
John Morton, Precinct 3. I was counting chairs and not listening to the introduction, my apologies. I come at this a little differently. We've heard wonderful things tonight about the planning and about all the work that has been done, and about the professionalism that's gone into the background of all of this. But you know, there comes a point where a town is confronted with a fundamental sort of turning point, where it has to declare what its values are and where it's going. And if you look at this project very, very carefully, you'll understand that there's no free lunch here. The building committee, the facilities committee, which was mentioned earlier, did in fact look at this building and come up with something like $5 million. But that $5 million was to simply patch it, to keep it from leaking, to change some of the damage that had been done. It did not upgrade the building. It did not focus on making this an educational institution in the 21st century. Those numbers were considered by this committee. Those numbers are very different. Those numbers are tens of millions of dollars. That is to say, to make this a progressive, productive, efficient educational institution will cost us tens of millions of dollars. And after we spend that, we'll be left with an old building that means, that needs and still requires tremendous money for operations and continued maintenance. So there's no free lunch. And there's another part to that. After we finish spending tens of millions of dollars to make this a really constructive and productive educational institution, we will have to have done that from our budget, from our town budget. There won't be a $52 million grant from the state to do that work. And I suspect that if you end up having to spend tens of millions of dollars to upgrade this building, we'll have to have a tax override, because we can't do both. We can't repair this building at the cost of tens of millions of dollars and operate the town with a two-and-a-half tax limit, which is to say, there's probably no way to avoid this kind of a tax override. So look at what we now have. We have a group of people who have managed to, through hard work and good planning, bring to this town the possibility of $52 million in actually free money, state money, money that we can use to build, to do what we have to do anyway, and money that will free up the budget from the kind of maintenance costs that we will otherwise have. I want to say one other thing. I hope the vote tonight is unanimous, because it really is a statement of what we as a community value, and how practical we are as a fiscal matter to understand the dynamics of that finance. But I want to say, we had a session before this meeting began from our congressman. He was here to tell us what he as a congressman and others were doing that had a special effect on the town. Well, folks, we are the congressman for our precincts. We are the congressman for the people we represent. And we have an obligation to tell them what we are doing and why we think it's important. So what I'm really saying is, it's not enough just to vote yes tonight, as I hope you all do. But there'll be an election on June 7th, and that election is critical. And many of the people who go to vote will not have had the benefit that you have had tonight to understand the profundity of this decision, the importance of this decision, and the financial reasonableness of this decision, and the consequences of not making this decision. So I ask you, don't just vote yes tonight, although I hope you vote resoundingly yes. But be your congressman, be the congressman. Go to your neighbors and tell them how important this is. Help them to understand what a turning point this is for this town, so that on June 7th, not only do we have the benefit of the unanimous vote here tonight, but we have an affirmative vote from the town. So I hope that we can all expand our responsibilities to make this happen, not only as town meeting representatives, but as advocates for the people who elected us and put us here. Please vote yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Brian Holmes, Precinct 3. Don't worry, Mr. Moderator, you won't get to the five-minute mark. I'd like to thank Dick Fitzgerald for raising this thing up about a foot, because I still have to lean over a little bit, so I'm glad somebody figured it out. We need a new high school. It's a resounding message here. I think it deserves to go to the voters on June 7th with a unanimous bow on it. I don't know if any of you folks don't know, I'm a municipal employee, and that means that I work for you when I'm not here. I interact with the public a great deal, and I'm hearing this myth out there that we're at a tipping point, and the tipping point is going the way of, you know, Sharon and Canton. That's not a reality at all. I hate to bring doom to all these positive messages that came before me. When I get to the point of why I'm bringing that up, you'll understand why I'm bringing it up. But the tipping point is not going the way of Sharon and Canton. And I'm not going to disparage the towns that surround us, but it's going in that direction. A new high school is not just about a building, it's not about books, it's not about education. It's about all that, and it's about the future of this town, okay? This building is going to bring us back to the tipping point, and it's a step in the right direction. I talked to about 30 people in my precinct over the last couple of weeks, and I asked them just off the cuff, "Hey, do we need a new high school? Do you support a new high school?" I got a resounding yes. I had one person that was kind of iffy because of the increase to the taxes. I'm going to be honest with you, I support it. I supported it from the time it came, you know, came to a plan and it came to a committee. I'm not going to take up any more of your time, but I really hope that it goes to the voters on June 7th with a unanimous bow on it. The last time I think a unanimous vote came up, it had been a long time. It was my former boss and it had something to do with tasers. Prior to that, I don't remember a unanimous vote at town meeting for anything. So I'd like to see that tonight. Thanks for your time.
Mr. Laurie, Precinct 6.
David Laurie, Precinct 6. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to say that out of all the things we vote on, there's a lot of capital investment that we try to get these projects going. Very few of them actually get off the ground. I just want to commend Dr. Rizzi for actually taking the votes that we have and actually put it into a project that could actually get to fruition, so I give her a lot of credit for that. But one of the, some of the things that concern me about this project, I just want to make sure it's clear, is that on one of the slides, you would have read at the bottom, it said, "The average home in Stoughton will pay $387 for the project." The thing that I think gets overlooked is that it's a 20-year loan, so that it's not just the first year at 387, but it's really $7,700 over 20 years. So I want everybody just, when they're making their vote, that they have a clear mind as to what they're really asking for the taxpayers of the town to actually do. Now, when it comes to like how much money is actually being spent, person- Now, when it comes to like how much money is actually being spent, personally, I mean, I agree that we need a new school and everybody did such an eloquent job of describing that. When I look at the product that came out, it looks like, you know, like Trump Towers. I mean, it looks like it's just, I mean, I mean, your eyes just pop out. You can't believe how beautiful the school is. So I think what it comes down to is, I mean, they could have gone with a strategy of saying, "We don't care about how beautiful the school looks. We want a new school that's just a practical place for our teachers and students to do their, to do their work." So I don't know what the delta is between an ugly school and a beautiful school, but I think really what we are voting for is not just a new school, but we're voting for something that's going to make the town more marketable for people to look at the town and say, "Oh, that's why it should come to Stoughton." So I think it's more about marketing than I think about what we really need for a new school. But personally, I think my tastes were probably about $100 million, not 120 personally. But these are just some thoughts I had and I had one question. I listened to TV about the board, the committee that works very, very diligently on it and there was a problem, I guess, with the auditorium with the size of the, that was allowed in the budget and that in order to get the number of seats needed, it was going to be either another extra million or an extra $2 million. Is that still true or are we getting the full scope of the auditorium that we?
No, the auditorium in this school building will seat 750 people and that was a, long been a point of contention with the committee, with the MSBA. It's actually a deal breaker. 751 seats in this auditorium would be a project that MSBA won't want to fund. They consider it an inefficient use of space and dollars where they would rather have it go into education. This is a room in the minds of MSBA that gets used fewer times per year than, say, a classroom. Still needs to be heated and air-conditioned like everything else and maintained like everything else. So that's one of the few things that if we exceed the space guidelines that MSBA sets, they will not fund the project. So we're set on a lesser number than we have in this room right here and it wasn't for lack of asking.
Yeah, the only design aspect that I call into question is, has to do with the black box theater. I took theater as a minor in college. I actually used a black box theater. I know exactly what it can do for students. I think it's a little bit more advanced. The design, the design of a black box theater is just complete black. I mean, the ceilings, the floors, the walls, everything's black. That means you have to bring in special lighting. It allows you to do a lot of interesting things, a lot around improvisation is one of the things you can do that is harder to do in other spaces. I looked at it as something like a privilege to do in college. It seems like really a lot of, I don't know, it looks like something of a luxury for high school to have. Personally, I think that. But I think if there was going to be a concession made in order to get the right amount of seating in the auditorium, I just personally think a black box theater would be a great place to make a trade-off, do it.
There's no trade-off allowed.
Well, that was, it's just my opinion, but that's, I just wanted to share my thoughts. Thank you.
You know, you elect us officials to come here. The town is growing in the right direction. Downtown is starting to pick up. People is taking interest here. As a matter of fact, a couple of real estate agents called me about three weeks ago and people that were going to move out of Stoughton are now staying in Stoughton because we're putting a new school up. Very important. How do you market a town that looks depressed? As I made the statement about the library, you ride through the center of town and you look at a beautiful high school, it makes you feel better. It does. And TJ was right. We went to the MAA convention and he rode me on every aisle to be found until we found this little old man sitting here and TJ was talking to him. And you know something that made me feel good? That these people did their job. We actually went and had a drink after that and I don't drink that much either. But he deserves a lot of credit. He put this thing as heart and soul, all these people over here, their heart and soul are into this thing. And as, and as selectmen in this town, you're giving us tools. You look at this part, go look at the other part. Hey, do you want to look at our new high school? Wow, it's great. The library is starting. You want to look at our new library? We haven't put a building up in this town in almost 17 years. Shame on us. Shame. It's time now to start building and do things right. And I know these people, they nothing to doubt and I have all the confidence in the world, in 19, we're going to be all sitting here and we're going to have a great party outside. Please vote for this, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The gentleman from Precinct 3 who spoke a few minutes ago brought me back really to what I was talking, thinking to talk about. It's about transition in the community. It's about how the community feels about itself. I want to start off with something that happened about 20 years ago, maybe more. I was driving a babysitter home after we'd been out. She was a junior in this building, very successful student, athlete. Our kids were about to start elementary school and I asked, "Tell me about the high school." And these are her words, 20 years ago, "A child of this community. This town is cheap. This school is bad." And she went on for the half of the ride telling me how she liked the teacher, she liked the program, but the building didn't work. It was an uncomfortable place to be. It was hard to be here. And the perspective that I got is that our children in the town thought we didn't think enough about them to give them a school where they were comfortable and happy to go to. That, that's important. Our children came to this high school, they did very well. Our children went off and have done very well in college and beyond. And I want to thank all of you for that because you made it possible. But we also heard about the building. You know, when your children come home from building, A Building, you know, I swear, you know, they got sick in that building. They referred to it as Hogwarts. You know, not a, not an, not an inaccurate thing to say. I get to teach once in a while here. It is not a good place for our employees, just like Station One is not a good place for our employees to be. We need to do better for the kids. We need to do better for our employees. Well, there's other reasons. Others have spoken more eloquently than I can about the effect of going from town to town. Our children see things when they go to other towns. All of that is, all of that is important. The education mission is important. Quality of life is important. But I think what one of the previous speaker was talking about is what it means for the stability of our town. Stability in terms of transients. So let me talk about one of my kids. He went to Peggy Suewitz preschool, had a great time, thought he'd met, you know, lifetime friends there and pretty much he did. But his best friend, second grade, moved out of Stoughton. So here's a little guy, okay, holding back tears, saying goodbye, not because somebody had to move because of a new job. They left because they were coming into the school system and they wanted to move to get a better education in another town for their children. How many of us, you know, all across the town have had that experience, either ourselves or our children? That our, the fabric of our town is torn apart because young children move somewhere else because their parents think they can get a better education or a better education experience somewhere else. We do this to ourselves by not paying attention to the things we need to do ourselves in this building. We're on a watch list. What prompted us to pay attention to this building? Because somebody else out of this town came in and told us, "This building isn't good enough for you." Enough of that. We say tonight, "This building served us well, but it's not good enough for us anymore." And what does that do for us? It stabilizes our town. People come into this town to stay here. They don't move into our apartment buildings to cause, you know, many police calls and other things. They move into our apartment buildings like we did when we were young so they can move into a smaller house and maybe stay in town. That's what we want people to move into. And why would they stay like maybe all of us? Because of their children and the schools. What difference does it make in business? Why do businesses locate where they locate? Location. What is the number one consideration for businesses where they go? The location for a place where their employees can have a good quality of life, for their employees to have the kind of education that they want the employees to have, that is a good, stable community for that business to be in. That's what we want this town to be. That's what tonight's vote will do. So please, vote yes. As a previous speaker said, wrap it in a bow of unanimity, make it yes and make no doubt when we go to the bond market, it makes a difference. When we go to recruit our next Amazon, it'll make a difference. When we go to do everything, it'll make a big difference. Thank you very much.
Mr. Smith from Precinct 7. I notice we're getting a lot of the repeat things, so.
Don't worry about that. It's going to be me. Questions? Tom, as much as I like Chinese fortune cookies, it's the teachers that teach, not the building. All right. I have a few questions. MSBA, state organization, makes you dance to their tune. The decision was made originally to go with MSBA, the state organization. The first question that should have been asked in this situation is, "What can we afford?" That was not asked, was not even considered upfront. We said, "Let's go on the dole. Let's grab some, some money from the state and that, they'll help us." Well, I had never seen that happen before. I have a, has SOLA going to be put on the building?
It's one of the options that, it's in the.
Not in the design at this point.
It's in the design at this point. It's one of the options.
All right. Geothermal?
No.
Because I watched a meeting and the representative said that geothermal is too expensive as powerful as electricity goes. But if you add solar to it, it drops down to really cheap.
We had a discussion about that. I can have Carl Franceschi come up and address that if you'd like.
Sure.
The question was whether geothermal has been considered for the project.
Yeah, geothermal and, and in combination with SOLA.
Our engineers did study that. They look at lifecycle costs and obviously they have made projections about energy costs as well. But in this project, like many of our other school projects, geothermal didn't make sense economically for this kind of project in terms of the payback, in terms of the effectiveness of it. Partly it has to do with the usage of a building. It's a little different for a school than for an office building or for a home in terms of when you need heat versus when you need air conditioning and, and the hours and the months of operation and so forth. But all those factors were figured in and in the end, we have a very efficient HVAC system proposed called variable refrigerant flow. It will get us to a LEED Silver certification in terms of energy efficiency, which also gets the town two extra reimbursement points. But it, geothermal didn't make sense in this situation.
Doesn't make sense? No, in combination with SOLA?
No.
Neither one?
No.
Okay, thank you. I'm curious, the current school is in tough shape because there's no maintenance budget in the school department. There is no line in the school budget that says maintenance. Every time they want to fix something, they have to come to town meeting to get their
It should be something in the budget.
Now, MSBA, they haven't signed off on this. That is not a done deal. If we go for the $123 million and MSBA says, "No, we're on the hook for the $123 million," correct?
No, that's not right.
All right, what is right?
MSBA Board of Directors will vote on May 25th. We found out at a meeting last Friday that it will be recommended to the Board of Directors by staff that the Board of Directors approve that. Now, that's all but a certainty that they will approve that at that point. But we're not on the hook for anything until we actually sign off and borrow $123 million, which.
All right, so if MSBA says no, then we're going to do something else? Is it, there's no plan B, is there?
Look, they're not going to say no, but the only reason why we're here before you this evening is because they've said yes to us to date. They allowed us into a process and they said yes to us at every step of the way that we presented them with the next step in the process. Show us a design. Show us a schematic. Show us the next step. Show us an educational program. Every step of the way, they've approved us for this final vote on May 25th, at which point they will give us their final endorsement and approve the grant amount that has already been set by staff.
All right. Why is there, why is there a difference on the 60 and the number that you?
56.26. 56.26. That's the reimbursement rate. That's right. That's because we, in addition, the reimbursement rate that was set, 56.26%, we get in addition to that, points. You heard Carl mention a few minutes ago about reimbursement, about points that we get for LEED Silver, for example. So when we have, when we have certain efficiencies in the building, for example, we established LEED Silver, one of the other incentive points that we get is when we do a construction management of risk, we get points and we picked up, I think it's four points. We're now 60, 60.67 is the percentage, is the reimbursement rate. We've actually picked up reimbursement money by the design that we presented to you. And can I, can I also say, in response to the initial question, that we didn't consider the cost outside of an MSBA process? I submit to you that that's exactly what you heard Mr. Fitzgerald talk about. That's the entire reason why we're here tonight is because they did consider cost in a form other than, they didn't even know there was an MSBA at the point. But they knew they needed a ton of money and they knew that nobody was lending money to towns at that rate for free. That's why we're in the process tonight because we do know the cost if MSBA is not involved. So, simple as that.
Dr. Bayata.
Good evening, Joe Bayata, 239 Schumont, Precinct 6. It's nice to be back to town meeting after a few years off. I see that things haven't changed in some ways, though. I'm a parent of a child in fourth grade at the Hanson Elementary School. I'm a former two-term member of the school committee. I'm a prior member of town meeting. I'm a prior member of the feasibility committee. I'm a 24-year educator and I'm the proud superintendent of the Norton Public Schools. I have been involved with two building, building projects as a high school principal and as a superintendent of schools. I started in Holbrook, Massachusetts as a principal and then superintendent. And it took me four years to get people on the same page to consider the first of its kind K-12 MSBA project. Today, they have broken ground on that project, the first in the Commonwealth. I was on the committee that proposed the idea, hired the OPM, hired the architect and hired the general contractor. The project passed town meeting with one negative vote and it passed a special election 74% to 26%. Nothing that people thought would ever happen in that community. I then went to Norton as superintendent in 2013 and took over a recently approved five-phase renovation project that was in stage, phase two. Again, a project that passed town meeting and the special election by overwhelming numbers, bringing together a community that was not known for passing those types of I comment on this because the Stoughton High School project from day one, from what I've seen, what I've heard, what I've attended, what I've listened to, is one of the most efficient and open and collaborative efforts in the history of the Commonwealth because I know this system. The local taxpayers involved, the professional staff and firms that are involved in this project have left no stone unturned. It is something we should and can be proud of if this body sends a clear message to the taxpayers that this is the right thing to do. I know that some that may suggest that a building does not make the education. In general, you may be right. In general, you may be right. We have a level one high school with difficult situations. Having four walls and doors and flushing toilets may not be the key to an education. However, today's education is very different. The 21st century skill a student must have in this age of technology is so different from 2008, from when I graduated from here in 1988, or from some of you from 68 or before. The skill, skill sets we teach are about team, collaboration, creativity, partnership, and the like. The 50-page education plan put forward for this project is about today, tomorrow, and decades from now. The plan is comprehensive and allows for flexibility of needs. It is one of the best I have read and I have read many. Children in Stoughton who are currently about to enter kindergarten this fall, this fall, are going to workplaces and fields of study when they graduate from Stoughton High School that aren't even yet developed today. We must look to have a new high school that is both central to learning and central to the future of our entire community. I know it's not cheap. Most of us in this room and within our community look for bargains. We know this building what costs us and yes, the cost may be difficult for some families. I understand that. I doubt, I don't doubt that one bit. But where is there a better bargain than 56 to 60% on the dollar? Let me end with the following. The very Holbrook project I started that took four years to even consider from the beginning to the ballot question, had a price, price tag to the Holbrook voters that went up by $20 million. And the Norton price tag from the time that the actual vote took place to the final ribbon cutting that I was able to attend would have cost the taxpayers over those three years $9 million more. If not today, then when? Taxes are forever, but a debt exclusion does go away and each day you drive by this new high school, you can look in the mirror and say that you had something to do with making it possible. So I ask that this body send a clear message to its taxpayers, because this body must do so. Send a clear message that due diligence has been done and we are building for the needs of today and tomorrow. Nothing more, nothing less. I ask for unanimous support of Article One.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. To Mr. Recupro and his staff and anybody involved in this project, thank you and God bless you. I had a lot of arguments with TJ about this and he'll will tell you, we agreed and disagreed a lot. As people in this room, we've talked to and talked about this building and everything else, I support this thing 100%. I have two children in the junior high, middle school, but junior high to me, seventh and eighth grade, they will be able to graduate from the new high school. I graduated here in 1985, great memories. But it's time to put this building to rest and build a new home for the Black Knights. I ask right now to stop right now. If you don't want to support the school, walk out this building right now. We don't want you here. We need the school now, we're going to vote for it. The only bad thing I don't like, and I have to say to Miss Miller, is the gym. When I came here in 1981, I looked at the gym and they told me to run from one side to the other and I said, "I'm going to have a heart attack, call the fire department." I came back two years ago to take a tour of the school and I became a member of the Board of Selectmen. And I looked at the gym and I asked if they changed the gym around because I actually could run the gym. So I was kind of impressed. This new gym, I don't think I could run it again, so I'm kind of a little disappointed. But I ask everybody right here right now, just if you support it, let's vote for it. If you want to disagree, get out of the building. We need a new school. Let's take this town forward. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm going to be very brief. I just wanted to, a gentleman that spoke that has been here for only four years, I wanted to speak as somebody who's been a lifelong member of the town. I was born here and during that time, I saw five elementary schools built and a middle school. And let me tell you that the people of Stoughton have always, even though they're a working class town, have always and will again support education. They have done so for year after year after year. Lou Gito and his wife, who are my classmates, way back when, a building was still creaking when I walked through it for my Latin class. And it needs to be changed, so it's time. So, to the Stoughton taxpayers and to the body here, for less than a cup of coffee at Dunkin' Donuts per day, you can have this. And I think that all of us, for $1.50 a day, will say yes to this building. So I urge you to please, please vote and go and tell your townspeople that's what it will cost them to have this beautiful new building that we need. And congratulations to the committees and the people who have worked so hard on this and for a million dollars that we gave, we want it to have now the place that it deserves in this new building. So I urge you to please vote yes for this. Thank you very much.
I'd like to move the previous question.
How low is in favor of moving the previous question? How low is opposed? Good, we don't need the clickers. On the question. I'm not going to read the whole thing. This is accounted, this has to be accounted vote and we have to record it as the same. So this is the first time we've done this in a town meeting? On the, on the motion, which was very lengthy and printed, and the only correction in that motion is that the wording for the number, the wording for the number, there's something that needs to be replaced over there. All right, I'm going to let our consultants here explain how to do this and we'll have The, I'll read this while you're playing with your little tools there. Okay. As written on this yellow sheet, it's a Shawna version, except it goes around the other side. But it's exactly what's been up there. Start. Now, I'm going to still ask that they give us a by precinct. I would say that is a two-thirds vote.